I don't think you want to walk them out when they come. I want them out, they just show them the part that you're in, because I would keep them if you don't want us out.
I, uh, I went in, my last name walked out.
Okay.
I didn't want any of that, I didn't want, I just...
Hold on, hold on, stop, stop. Hold still.
Should I just go on to you or money?
Sure, yeah.
Yeah.
The next line is fine.
Alright, this time I will call to order the Central School District Board Meeting of August 22nd, 2017. A directive let that all board members are present with the exception of Teresa DeFalco and Matt Curran on vacation this week. At this time, the Chair will entertain a motion to enter executive session for the purposes of...
Next page.
...regime of attorney for Board of Ed, legal issues pertaining to post settlement of Subs. Service Board Section 75 proceeding as an employee. You agree with attorney for Board of Ed legal status pertaining to possible change in name of school district. You agree with attorney for Board of Ed status of collection of taxes bill. You agree with attorney for Board of Ed status of litigation pertaining to alleged negligence supervision. You agree with attorney for Board of Ed termination of employment of substitute custodial work and status of federal litigation. You agree with attorney for Board of Ed email communication for parent. You agree with attorney for Board of Ed legal issues pertaining to ward system pending legislation. You agree with attorney for Board of Ed legal issues pertaining to possible pilot agreement for grammar living. You agree with attorney for Board of Ed legal issues pertaining to possible pilot agreement for travel medical. And you agree with attorney for Board of Ed recent decision of Commissioner. Okay, Teresa.
Second.
Go on, go on there.
Okay, I see upstairs.
Coming in for you today.
Well, just open it, everybody's so...
I'll second everything.
Marty, I love it, that's good. It's easy.
It's easier.
No, because you're gonna do that.
Okay.
Now you can't do that.
Angela's saying. Somebody should shut off the camera too.
Yes, thank you.
How long did you, how long did you take today?
Uh, not much.
Not much? Not much.
Are you doing alright? Are you sore?
Great.
Restful, restful. Okay. Get your way. Come on, thank you. How many hours?
So, last year, fifteen minutes.
Only ten minutes right now.
Oh!
Right, right to point. Okay, will we call the, uh, meeting to order? I'll let, uh, Secretary of State put her allegiance and call up two of those members, walk forward again, give me some questions.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you guys, thank you. Okay, do we have a student's vote? I'm sure not for the summertime.
Not this time.
No, okay. Uh, minutes of the re-ord meeting for meeting of July 5, 2017, can I have a motion to accept those votes?
Make motion.
Okay, thanks Marty. Secretary Teresa, all in favor? Okay. Passed. Minutes of the, I'm sorry, minutes of the re-ord meeting, this is minutes of the regular meeting of July 5, 2017, can I have a motion to accept those?
I agree more, I'll second.
Beautiful Marty and Teresa, get all in favor.
Hi.
Hey, passes. Superintendent, his comments.
Okay, under my comments will be Teresa and Anthony, they will be discussing tax rate and reserves. And just to recall, you know, the spring of the budget vote, it's tax levy. Tax rate has multiple other factors that will have an impact on the ultimate tax rate. Uh, so Teresa and Anthony will try to explain some of the factors that are impacting the tax rate. And, and try to remind everybody in the spring, when you were going through this, you know, there's the tax levy, but then assessment really impacts in an adverse way most of the time, the tax rate. So I think you'll see that play out, and then hopefully they'll remind you of some of the reserve issues that our auditor talked about last fall, and, you know, continuing, uh, growth of our taxer issues. So Teresa, Anthony.
Okay, I'm gonna, do I need to mic on it? I'm gonna talk about the tax rate and then Anthony will get into the reserve segment. So, and, uh, Angela's mic will hear tonight. So, we've done this before, but we have some people, and there's always some good people joining us. Just to explain a little bit, the main factors in the tax, we actually tax rate include the levy that the board decides was an issue, but also a big impact, especially if you see this year, is assessed valuation. As our assessed valuation goes down, our tax rate goes up, and obviously us here at Ramaco Central, we have no control over that whatsoever. Another thing is the equalization rate, which tries to bring your, your, uh, rate up to market value. Uh, and then the exemptions, we have some exemptions last year, Cleveland was the first time we had the veterans tax exemption, and we always have the clergy exemption. Once we have all these calculations done, and we have, we have three towns here in our district, so ninety, something percent is, um, Ramaco Central, uh, town Ramaco, I'm sorry, but some of it is Tuxedo, and we also have some property in Moret. So the total, the tax value is the total amount of taxes that we ask people to pay, and that was what was approved by the voters in May, and after the Board of Education approved that. And then the taxable assessed value is what our properties all were in Ramaco, May. So this is just a little view of the assessed value and the changes in the assessed value from 2004 to, to the present day. Um, as you see, there are some large expect times, and then that was off, but again lately it's been a little higher. There's one anomaly there, and that's in fourteen fifteen. Uh, those of you that were here at that time, remember that they put a property on the Watchtower, they had added that to the assessed value, which they shook up and be, was an exact property, so that inflated the assessed value, which wasn't true, and then that's why the next year dips a little bit more, um, than usual. This year, we had almost a two percent tax, uh, assessed value decrease. That decrease basically is gonna cause our taxes to go up by two percent. So even though we raised taxes one point two, with the assessed value and some additional factors, they're gonna go up, and I'll show you a little bit, to three point three. I, I showed you the left side, eleven million dollars, that's what made up the one point nine nine percent. The base, the main components of that are Con Edison, which we had a, some tax certs from them, which we settled a couple of years ago, and when those were settled, they, we, they didn't, we didn't have to pay them anything, but we were, the agreement was that their assessed value would be lower. That's the same with Orange and Rockland. Navarides, of course, they asked, they actually have three years of tax certs for them, even this year, because even though they lowered it, uh, by two point two million, it really still is like four million dollars, or... So I could, if they're selling their property between twenty and twenty-five million, which looks like it might happen, we could expect that to be reduced again next year, or whenever they sell between one point five, one point eight million, I would say. Uh, that is also three years of basically a million dollars a year that we have in our tax reserve. Those are real dollars, and you know they're not selling their property for anywhere near what they're paying in taxes. So those are real dollars. The other thing is Orange Avenue, which is the, uh, tax pilot downtown, so they're coming off, and they're going on pilot agreement for that property where they're building the buildings downtown. So these four properties, mainly the three, are eighty-seven percent of that eleven million dollars. However, there are also, you know, there's a lot of properties, it's like nine out of ten pages of it. So there's a lot of little properties involved in that reduction of the assessed value, but these are the main properties. This is a complicated, beautiful view of our assessed value, of our tax rate and how we do it. So as you see, when I explained before, there's three different ta, um, towns in our district. Tuxedo and Habistor, ninety-five to ninety-nine percent of the, in state lands. Uh, Habistor has a small property eighteen T, the rest of it is all New York state lands. But you see that Ramaco Central, the town around, I'm sorry, makes up ninety-seven percent of ours. So the impact is always gonna be greater here in people in town of Ramaco. This calculation produces a tax rate ratio, which again, with ninety-seven percent here for the people, almost ninety-seven, there's people here in the town of Ramaco, and so we're getting a hundred and four million dollars of that hundred and eight that we totally are assessing for the year. Because of the change in the tax, the assessment, and what we, we, uh, put in as a tax levy, the change in the tax rate for the people living in the town are three point three zero percent. Again, one point two approximately is what we raise the levy, um, two percent is approximately the assessed value, and point one is the equalization rate. What also doesn't take into effect, which can have us, you know, we don't know the exact number yet, but it could be maybe, it depends on the person, what your tax, how much your tax base is. The stars don't want to go down again last, this year. Last year it went down significantly, this year it's not going down significantly, but it's probably about forty dollars a person, thirty, forty dollars a person, a household. And this is just to show you again how much the change in effect in assessed value affects the actual tax rate increase. So here, one point two is our levy, but with a two percent decrease in the assessed value, that is causing our tax rate increase, so the actual dollars people to pay, three point three percent. And for the most part, it's all, it works, if you're, you know, like in, in oh eight, oh nine, our tax rate was four point four, but the assessed value went down one point six, and we're over six percent. The couple that is not exactly working for, which has stores next to it, the equalization rates changed drastically in those, those years, and they affected the tax rate. But as you can see, we've been losing assessments here in the town of Ramaco for a long time, putting bigger burden on the taxpayers, those of us that are left here, so... And now Anthony, does anybody have any questions on the tax rate? You know, we always, I just want to remind, we all, and I said at the beginning, we always talk to you that when we're setting, when we're doing our budget, it's really important to think tax rate, because even though we're doing the levy, there's some, I mean, like last year we had zero budget, but to pay over one point, I forgot what it was, one point eight or something, the taxes went up a couple percent. We didn't raise it a dime. So it's really important when we go through the budget process, and we always try to talk about that, is that what other factors are involved in the tax rate to the people?
Thank you, Teresa. Um, this time of year, not only are we obviously setting our taxes, we're closing out last year. And, uh, it's busy time in summer, uh, and finance is part of the operation. And, uh, really, as we close out this year, the main thing we were happy to report is, and you can switch over, is our revenues for the year came in higher than our expenditures. This is always the goal. Um, there were some unique reasons this year, uh, revenues came in higher in the area of state aid. Some of that is just due to, you know, chasing after every dollar, but also reality is our expenditures in certain areas like special ed and transportation do generate additional state aid. And we also settled a lawsuit successfully, and that also brought in almost three quarters of a million dollars, which was not part of, uh, the plan for the year. So that, those are the two main revenue areas. Expenditures, primarily it's, uh, salaries and benefits that came in slightly less, and, um, and again, on a hundred thirty-four million dollar budget, it's not really that big of a differential that was left on spend. That leads us, uh, to the ability to basically have six point three million dollars more that we can now distribute into reserves. And what is the difference? We had conferences that came in less, we finished a bunch of jobs including rekeying district schools, uh, that came in less than we had originally planned, that freed up some money. And there's an accounting entry, we'll be paid for the turf field, uh, we'll see where, in effect, we can end that out, new capital projects. But after we close out the year, we have six point three million dollars to basically handle some of the needs of the district, how it's going forward. The biggest need we have each year now is tax surcharge. It's kind of like a Dante's Inferno, where we levy, uh, based on assessments, assessments go down, that hurts our tax rate, and simultaneously, people are asking for a tax payment, and Anthony will get into the list of what those are. But our recommendations, part of our plan here, is we put two point seven million dollars, and that's six point three away, in order to deal with those tax surcharges. Uh, each year, we put money into employee benefits reserve for retirements. Actually, our account system system will be handling it differently this year, that's the seven hundred forty-eight thousand dollars, so that would be directly for, uh, the purposes of retirement payments. And then, we are allowed under the state now to use a retirement reserve. We were set that up, we can put up to two years' worth of payments into it. This is about one year's worth of payments, we're recommending for you that. And lastly, the voters at the board approved a seventy-dollar capital reserve back in May. We said, well, we're gonna fund that, you know, as we close out each year. The goal was at least a million a year, and we're able this year to put a little more of that down, uh, because of some of the one-time revenues and expenses reductions we have. So that's the plan that basically, you know, sets aside into our rainy day funds, uh, the funds that were there came in this year. Tax certs, literally boxes come in each summer, uh, of, these are just new, these are new petitions. So every year, we're talking about the artists that, they're in third year, uh, where they're fighting their taxes. These are brand new, that were never there before. So just the likelihood for these parcels alone is four point six million dollars. A lot of them are first times. So the four point six is new potentials, and we did have some that went off. Uh, so as we closed them, obviously we realized, if we didn't pay, if they don't receive what they've applied to in tax surcharge, we bring that back to you. So, in effect, the net is that two point seven million. So four point six is what we needed for new ones, and we were able to release about one point nine of existing. So our tax surcharge reserve, at the end of the year, we will have is twenty million dollars. That's, they're, they're made fine all those bills, that's who we get that. Capital reserve, um, we're adding one point six, we sent out to the turf fields, one point one at the start of the school year. That leaves us three point four million, and that's really between two different authority, so we can slice that later. One point six nine five is what the new, uh, down payment on ten million dollars is. The rest is, uh, capital reserve that's approved ten years ago. I'm sorry. Okay, great. And we, uh, obviously we have approvals to spend that money already from voters approved by SED and voters. Voters approval, SED is going to be responsible for this. Unemployment reserve, we have two hundred sixty-eight thousand here, basically we don't budget for unemployment payments. As they come, we take them out of the reserve. We set up an insurance reserve for those things that may come as a claim against the district for which we don't have insurance. So this would be deductibles and so forth, or, or literally items that would not be covered by insurance like construction, but maybe, so on. We have money in a debt service reserve of one point five million, that'll help us, uh, to reduce our debt. There's a big drop-off in our state aid for debt in two thousand nineteen, twenty, and we're gonna be putting together a five-year plan right after, now that we closed books. And we will see the year that we are maybe use that one point five million. Uh, there's kind of a funding cliff from nineteen twenty. Um, and then here's the two new reserves, the employee benefit reserves, seven fifty thousand bucks in the, uh, one set up for retirement payments in one point two. So you can feel confident that the district is well reserved, you're in a very good financial position as far as being able to handle our immediate needs, we're taking care of our capital without borrowing money, uh, so, um, it really has good finances that way. Our biggest problem is, as was discussed, assessed value reductions. Hopefully, with the fact that Con Ed was a one-time hit, and the artists will commit to that little book, not much, this could be maybe the worst year to see it next year, as far as assessing reductions. Okay, nice. That's all. Okay. And at that, we can answer any questions. All beef reserves, and as well as the tax rate, is our part of the action items tonight.
Any questions?
Thank you very much, this is, uh, actually broken down in a clear and easy following, so I appreciate that. Usually it's most confusing.
Yeah, it's confusing, usually I'm hearing a lot of school.
Yeah, very clear, thank you. Oh. Um, just have a couple of general questions. So the, the retirement reserve fund, that's about a year that we're putting away.
Yes.
Is the same for the benefits, is it also about a year or no?
The benefits are about, it's actually used to be in the expenditures, and when we settle these reserves, we move things into these reserving, it's kind of like we did with the tax cert, we were in reserve years ago, we used to cover the tax certs, you know, let me set that up. So that is actually what possibly we can pay next year for people retired. So it's just a movement.
It's a rough year estimate again, just like...
We have names behind everything on that there, but yes, it's a, it could, it could change. Absolutely, it's a movement, absolutely.
In terms of the, uh, the pilot for Orange Avenue, um, I recall discussions that, um, the current properties that are on the land were not really bringing a lot of revenue because of their age or the quality of the, the business that's on them, et cetera, et cetera. There was a variety. We still aren't at a lower revenue than the past this year from this particular lane? So this is still a drop?
They've taken that totally off, so, because that's the new pilot program.
Right.
They're, they won't be, but when you have a pilot program, they're no longer on assessed value. They're, they give us a separate payment, and you recall, when you revenue, we have other revenue pilots that are there.
So the new pilot is still lower than those assessments have been in the past?
We can give you the specifics on that, Robert.
That, that's the question, basically.
Usually when you go to a pilot, it's part of what you're buying is the surety. We have tax surety, and they have a lower, uh, base, and then it goes back to full.
Right. Just curious how they compare, how they compare, that would be great. And then turf, is that, is that what we have estimated originally?
That's what the voters approved, that's what, it's an accounting entry, what the voters approved goes into capital fund, excuse me. It's an accounting entry, we might, I think you have a...
That's what we're hoping, right?
I mean, pretty close.
Yeah, that's what we're hoping.
Do we have a final expense on that?
Yeah, I guess within, you know, a few thousand dollars, that's, that's it.
Okay, so came pretty close. And then maintenance cost, I know this is not the time for it, we were curious what it's gonna cost to maintain it, if we can see that at one point with, you know, the new, the new fields, yeah.
We'll do the five-year plan.
Yeah, what we're investing into maintaining it.
Oh, yeah.
Thank you very much, thank you, we have to maintain.
I think we're good, thank you very much for taking something complicated, maintain it as possible, okay? Good job, thank you very much. Alright, the next, I think we have is public participation, action item only, public participation as to action item, oh, excuse me, action items only, which are items two point zero one to two point four zero. This session will last no longer than thirty minutes, you may just perpusing. If you'd like to make any comments in respect to those items, please step up in the podium to your name, address, the school affiliation, pursuant to policy twelve thirty, fourteen hundred and thirty to forty. Please address your comments to the board without mention of any school district employee force. If anybody would like to get up and discuss for a while, if they have any comment about actions. I guess we'll close that part, this is simple. And if we like your vote on the action items, like you can set the agenda from two zero one to two point four zero, with the exception of, I believe, the money one, two point one one vote. Is there any other items, numbers, any you'd have to vote? Just do, okay. So why don't we vote first on action items two point zero one to two point one zero, and two point one two to two point four zero? Motion? Teresa?
Second.
Marty, thank you, all in favor? Okay, thank you, now two point one one, uh, open discussion.
Okay, so, um, we are considering a resolution. Um, we all received great news on Monday, yesterday, um, that Governor Cornwall has, um, signed a bill to approve the change of our, uh, school district from Ramaco Central School District to Suffolk Central School District, uh, which had gone initially to the, um, NICEF, um, which advised us to go that route, to, to present a bill for the Assembly and the Senate, and then the governor. So the bill has been approved unanimously by the Assembly and the Senate, and then the governor signed on to it, so, um, we are looking at resolution now, um, that within a maximum of thirty days, that, uh, this bill has been returned back to the State Education Department in order to issue a certificate for us to change the name of the district. Um, the deadline's thirty days, it could be less than that, that, you know, Commissioner Marielle Elliott acts on it. So it could be five days, it could be maximum thirty days. And, um, we are looking to, whether to resolve or not, to, um, act as or be Ramaco Central School District, because that's what we still are, acting as or in, in...
Doing business as.
Doing business as Suffolk Central Schools. So that's what we're resolving on today. And I'd like to discuss basically what would the impact of not take, not passing this resolution be on our district? To wait two days, five days, twenty days, maximum thirty days? To wait for the Commissioner of Education to actually take that action? Uh, and then, you know, in respect to, um, our New York State Education Department, and the Commissioner then starting doing business as Suffolk? What would, and any negative impact be in waiting those few days, that maximum would be thirty days? Thank you.
I think for us, what we're trying to do is to eliminate as much confusion as possible. If we start the year as Ramaco Central, and it could be the first day of school, they say, well, now you're Suffolk Central, then we have to go through changing Suffolk Central, so there, there may be confusion with parents, kids, vendors, and, and so to the extent we can turn the page to Suffolk Central, start changing everything over in terms of our vendors, our website, our email addresses, so that when we start the school year, it's Suffolk Central, and, and there's no expensing out there. So we, we were hoping that since this legislation passed the Assembly and the Senate unanimously, that the governor would have had an opportunity to sign this earlier, so we could, we would have to go through this. But as you pointed out, the legislation directs the Commissioner that within thirty days he must issue us a certificate, thirty days from yesterday. And so he could wait as long as, you know, third week of September before we change the name. And so we just think that it would be cleaner if we start the year with one name, and that's what we are moving forward.
Just to be clear, it can't be overturned by the Commissioner because it was voted on. So it's really just a matter of getting approved, whether it's tomorrow or thirty days.
The, correct, the, the Commissioner actually submitted a letter on our behalf saying that we have complied with all legal requirements, supports the name change, but she felt like the legislature needed to approve it. So the legislature did, the governor signed it yesterday, and so we would not anticipate any issues, but, uh, she is, in the legislation the way it's worded, she is directed to issue the certificate within thirty days.
Now, if I'm not mistaken, we've had these discussions, but this is not something that happens frequently, you know, it's, it's one, it's not something the, the part of education does on a regular basis, changing district names. So being that this is once in a while that this occurs, this was the process we were given. And we have followed through the process and done our due diligence to follow the recommendations of the Commissioner and go through the, a longer path that's taken a few more months.
Yes.
But we have crossed all our boxes, you know, post our, you know, questionnaires to the community and community feedback. We got the whole Assembly unanimous, the whole Senate unanimous, and now the governor, who could have vetoed it in spite of all that, so there was a big positive here, uh, signed on it, approving it, and passing the bill. Um, just my feeling is exhibiting a few more days of patience, to, in, in all due respect to the State Education Department, Commissioner of Education. It's not sounding like it's a terrible, uh, you know, giving up too much, a few more days, and, and since it's a given, it's gonna happen, and we know we're gonna have that through and a certificate issued, uh, it would be really great if we reconsider this, and just, you know, a few more days would not come at a loss, because it's gonna happen, we're gonna have to transition anyway, I'm assuming... I'm assuming, as you said, with vendors, you know, that we've already contracted, with material going out, with our website that's actually being revamped. There's, there's going to be, you know, a duration of time when we're transitioning into that new name, which we've used anyway unofficially all along. I'm just, you know, recommending, yes, recommending that we exhibit a few more days patience in respect to.
So are you suggesting that the board not approve the resolution, or approve it and ask us to sit on it for a few days?
The resolution specifically says that during that transition, before she issues the certificate, we would do business as.
Yes.
So that resolution is not about the name change. We've already resolved that a long time ago, we all supported it actually unanimously as well. The resolution is just, you know, to just actually go ahead and do business as Suffolk. I'm recommending that we don't because, again, it's a matter of a few days that we can wait, after waiting for so many months.
And I think at this time, basically, it's already a resolution upon an agenda, and I'm.
So that's the discussion, that's basically what.
Absolutely, and I, I think at this point, what we would do is, we'll take a vote, and, you know, obviously, consent agenda, but I'm going to put up two point one zero, which would be the change. Resolution for the school district doing business.
Two point eleven.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Well, it's two point one, I apologize, two point one one.
The number.
School district doing business under a new name of Suffolk Central School District. Do I have a motion to accept that as this? Teresa, second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor? All right, opposed?
Nay.
Okay. So the resolution is passed to the one. Okay. And very respectful, but I totally appreciate, I'm just going to, yours for some. No, no, that's just, that's good. All right, the next thing we have is public participation. Thank you, we started a mess up here, okay, good. All right. Three point zero is public participation. This session lasts for longer than thirty minutes, three minutes per person. If you'd like to make any comments in respect for those items, please step up to the podiums to your name, address, the school affiliation. Once again, pursuant to policies, twelve thirty, fourteen hundred, thirty to forty. Please address your comments to the board without mention of any school district employee or student. Would anybody like to speak, have any issue?
How you doing? I'm Connor Mascola, I'm a technology teacher at Suffolk Middle School. Just want to say that with the boys' basketball team at high school, I'm the JV basketball coach. We took the Morrissey JV boys to St. Joseph's University a couple of weekends ago. It was good because they got a feel for a college campus, a very nice place, and, you know, good sense of camaraderie amongst the groups, so that went well. And also, for the JV team separately, in our summer league that we played in, in last semester, the Dobbs Ferry, we won the section one JV championship. So we have a bright group on the horizon, so just wanted to say that, you know, things are going well. I'm looking forward to another good school year.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, and thank you for your efforts and what you do for our kids here in the district. Thank you. That's actually what you did, thank you. Anybody else experienced anything? Okay, we'll close off public participation, and closing comments of the superintendent.
Just a reminder, I believe the board agreed to do the building walkthrough on August thirty-first, nine AM. I believe we're meeting at the high school to start, see the renovations that have taken place there. I think we have a few other buildings that we'll go to. I don't see we're going all available, three. And, and, and I can share the schedule with you. Two weeks from today, the teachers return. I know they're excited.
So excited, can't wait.
Can't wait, totally.
And the kids, two weeks in a day. So we're looking forward to it. Hopefully, we'll have everything ready for when the children arrive. Thank you, God.
Thank you, and thanks for all you do, and for the prayer, thank you for having me do the job. How everybody else, thank you. And last but not least, a motion to adjourn. Marty? All right, Teresa, all in favor? So just enjoy the rest of your summer, thank you, brother. Great, you're wonderful, you jumped on the boat. Yeah, I hope you missed something, I was supposed to pick up and out for you. I was pointing it on, sooner or later. Then you go here, the picture, I thought my passport, I thought I took it. I thought I took something.